January 9th, 2017, and the time is 7:00 PM. The purpose of this meeting is to organize the board for the 2017 calendar year. We will begin with the oath of office for newly elected board members. So I would ask Amy Gorwitz, Rob Hardy, Ellen Iverson, and Noel Stratton to step out from behind the table as I will administer the oath of office. Okay, maybe if you guys wanna...yeah, can you can see, Bruce, you can see that. Perfect, okay. "It is an honor to be elected to guide the education of our community's children. As each of you recites the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility along with the other members of the board for equitable and quality education of every student in the Northfield School District. In carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, accountability, and advocacy. In providing vision, the board formulates the educational goals and sets the course for the Northfield Public Schools. As a board, we are accountable to the community and must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement and all conditions affecting the education of our children. As board members, we also serve as key advocates for education on behalf of students in our community. We must strive to continue to work together with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering educational excellence for every student. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me?" You could raise your right hand? "I swear that I will support..."
"I swear that I will support..."
"...the Constitution of the United States and of this state..."
"The Constitution of the United States and of this state..."
"...and that I will discharge faithfully..."
"And that I will discharge faithfully..."
"...the duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District 659."
"The duties of the office of school board member of Independent School District 659."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
"To the best of my judgment and ability."
Congratulations. Okay, we will move on now to election of officers. As the acting chair, I ask for nominations for the office of chair. Margaret, I would like to enthusiastically nominate Julie Pritchard to continue in the role as board chair. Okay, Julie Pritchard is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of chair are closed. All those in favor of Julie Pritchard as board chair say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for your continued support. Okay, we'll continue now with election of remaining officers. Nominations are now in order for office of vice chair. Rob?
I would like to nominate Ellen Iverson for the office of vice chair.
Okay, Ellen Iverson is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations, nominations for office of vice chair are closed. All those in favor of Ellen Iverson as vice chair say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Nominations are now open for the office of clerk. Jeff?
I nominate Noel Stratton.
Okay, Noel Stratton is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of clerk are closed. All those in favor of Noel Stratton as clerk say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Office of treasurer. Nominations are now open for the office of treasurer.
I would like to nominate Rob Hardy.
Rob Hardy is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Last call for nominations? Okay. Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the officer of treasurer are closed. All those in favor of Rob Hardy as treasurer say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will move on, individual action item number three, which will set the stipend of school board members. In your packet, there's information regarding school board members' stipends in the Big Nine surrounding districts, as well as Northfield's current stipend. Is there a motion to either maintain board members' stipends at the current level or to modify them for 2017? Ellen?
I move that we maintain them at the current level.
Okay, we have a motion to maintain board stipends at the current level. Is there a second? Second by Jeff. Any discussion? Questions? Go ahead. Amy?
I just had a quick question about the amount. I know no one gets into this for money, and there's a lot of time involved. But I did ask Matt to look up for me when the last time the amount was increased, and it turns out it was nine years ago, and at that point it was increased $10. And I just wanted to...not that I'm looking for an increase amount this year, but I was wondering if we could put it into the future, that as we're looking forward to a year from now, when the...at which point it'll be 10 years since any increase has been made, maybe we could consider it in the budget for the next fiscal year and sort of plan that that might be something we would do in the future?
We could consider that. It would have to be, you know, a board vote, and we would have to address that at next year's organizational meeting. But we could...you could choose to do that at our 2018 organizational meeting, if you were to choose to do that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Hmm?
Okay, good. All right.
As I'm sure most taxpayers are, it seems uncomfortable when a group, a governing group, an elected group, will vote on their own stipends. So I'd like to also have us look at maybe a committee of perhaps teachers or citizens who would look at making recommendations based on board performance and other information such as the rest of the Big Nine, and make recommendations about stipends. Is that possible within our bylaws?
I think that's a piece that we'll just want to make sure that we get clarification from MSBA on because, at the end of the day, Margaret, I believe you would have to vote for the stipend. As you might recall, our legislative body actually just did what you're suggesting, but it was through a constitutional amendment. So that's a piece that before we were to go into that particular area, I don't have a problem with the concept, but I do think that it's something we should get some advice from MSBA and from legal counsel on to make sure that you are in the strongest position you possibly can be.
Okay, good. Maybe we can look at that again for a year from now. Okay, any other comments or discussion regarding board members' stipends? Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second to maintain board members' stipends at the current level for 2017. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Individual action item number four, committee appointments. In your packet, board members, you're able to see your current committee assignments. And what I would like to recommend is that everyone take time to review your current assignments and then contact me so we can finalize assignments for the 2017 year. And if board members are comfortable with this, I'd like to have assignments determined by our next board meeting on January 23rd. Okay? Great, thank you. So I'm sorry...
I just had a question about that. So the process is I would contact you and just tell you what I'm interested in?
Yes. Yes, and then as board chair, I would make the final assignments.
Okay.
But yeah, I would definitely solicit input from board members in terms of their interest and where they would like to be slotted for the next calendar year. Thank you. Is there anything...okay, I'm sorry. We'll move on to items for consent grouping. Within that consent grouping, is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Noel?
Moved.
Is there a second? Second by Rob? All those in favor of approving the consent grouping say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with that, that concludes our 2017 organizational meeting. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Ellen, is there a second?
Second?
Second by Amy. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned. We will move now forward with the regular school board meeting. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, January 9th, 2017, and the time is 7:15 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in the table file.
Yes, there were. There were some additional personnel items. There was also an update to a policy 501 that we're reviewing for the first time this evening. Just to clarify, the update was to remove some antiquated cross-references that are no longer necessary. And then we also have the enrollment report.
Okay, excellent, thank you. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. And I also wanted to mention that board member Stratton has a commitment this evening, so he will be leaving the board meeting just shortly after 8:00 PM tonight. Okay. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on with approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the regular school board meeting held on Monday, December 12th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Ellen, is there a second? Second by Rob. Any discussion regarding minutes? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, December 12th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Hillman, next on the agenda, announcements and recognitions.
We have several this evening. So first, Northfield High School DECA would like to thank Northfield Toastmasters member Ray Young for his commitment to offering a Toastmasters course to interested DECA members weekly from October 12th to December 14th. Ray involved the students in various roles, from running meetings, had members prepare speeches, and he proponented public speaking, professionalism, and confidence. And we want to thank Ray Young for his contribution to our DECA program. What a great resource that is for them to develop their public speaking and other kinds of meeting organizational skills. On January 13th, 44 DECA members will compete in the DECA district competition, moving this year to the Big Nine district held in Oatana. The district competition gives students the opportunity to earn a trip to the state career development competition held on March 19th through the 21st in Minneapolis. The Northfield Human Rights Commission will sponsor a community celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his message at Emmaus Church on January 16th from 7:00 PM to 8:15 PM. A few performances by area youth and the speaker addressing healing will be featured, as well as awarding the annual Human Rights Award. This event is free and open to all, and if you've not been to that before, it's really a wonderful community celebration. I encourage you to consider attending. Northfield Community Services is a recipient of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, affectionately referred to as Smith. Their 30th anniversary Early Childhood Initiative grant, Northfield Early Childhood Initiative will be receiving $10,000 for the Supporting Our Babies project. Access to high-quality early childhood programming is strongly linked to kindergarten readiness, future academic success, and overall health and well-being. With the support of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund, Northfield Public Schools' Early Childhood Initiative Coalition will implement three innovative outreach efforts: the Latino Childcare Providers Network, Early Learning Childhood...excuse me, Early Learning Childcare at Greenbelt Park Community School, and a Time for Baby class. So congratulations to Director Bailey and the entire Community Services Department on this very nice grant, and we're very appreciative and put to good use. We're very proud to announce that the National Education Association has chosen Kelly Edwards from Greenbelt Park and Sue Leidner from Sibley to participate in the NEA Leadership Summit in Orlando on February 24th. Kelly and Sue are two of 15 in the state of Minnesota who are asked to participate in the Leadership Summit, and they will serve as educational assistants within the district. So we're very happy for Kelly and for Sue. We'd like to thank volunteer coordinators at Greenbelt Park, Sibley, and Bridgewater Elementary Schools. You may have seen in the paper, these students at these buildings through the volunteer coordinators found a way to help other kids by collecting more than 2,400 books to donate to Northfield Promise. And I was talking with one of the PTO presidents who said when they were trying to find some pieces that can help PTOs work together across buildings, and their initial goal was 300 books. We think that they did okay with 2,400. And finally, I'm going to ask Bruce to step over and cue up the short video. We're very pleased to announce that the winner of the 2017 FIRST Robotics Safety Animation Award, which is sponsored by UL, are none other than your Robo Raiders of Northfield High School. And this is a national award. It's quite a big deal. These students who...or the team that participated in putting this together will be shown before every FIRST competition internationally during this season, which kicked off officially on Saturday. When you go, if you have a chance to go out to look at the website, you know, they...it's truly an international competition, and the fact that Northfield won FIRST in the FIRST competition is very impressive. And so Bruce is going to show this. The one thing I want to point out is that all of those pictures that you...at first I had to ask them if they were really telling me the truth, but I've been told that every piece of cartoon that you see there was hand-drawn by a student named Christian Olson using his iPad. And he actually hand-drew every one of these pieces, then, of course, they animate it and have a voiceover. So Bruce is going to play this for us now so you can see this very short video.
In a utopian universe where safety actually comes first, students are taught the importance of safety in a technology-dominated world. This level of education would not be possible without the fantastic leadership of the safety captains and mentors who set excellent examples of what it means to be safe. They do this through lessons on safe tool and machine usage, stressing good communication with something in the shop is not safe. They encourage the use of proper safety equipment such as goggles, vests, helmets, and welding gloves in the appropriate situations. Eventually, the students gain the ability to police themselves. Less time wasted accidents means more time for innovation and engineering. As the students grow up, they themselves become the captains and mentors teaching the next generation of bright minds. This cycle of safety education keeps the utopia alive.
So we congratulate the Robo Raiders. You know, they usually make an annual appearance here.
Yes.
And again, that's going to be something that will be shown at every competition across the world. So congratulations to them. And yeah, I think that's... And those are your announcements for this evening.
Excellent. Board members, is there anything anyone would like to add? Okay. We will move on for our first item, for discussion and a report, and that is a report on the Symposium on Continuous Improvement, and we have several district staff people here to present.
And as they're getting set up, just to share, as you know, we have often talked in the district about the concept of continuous improvement, which, for this old 4-H, it's about making the best better. That's the 4-H motto, and I think that really sums up continuous improvement. And Zach Pruitt, who is here tonight, but will always try to be behind the scenes, came to us saying, you know, there's...Menominee Falls, Wisconsin has really had this very successful run of continuous improvement, and so much so that they've had to limit the visits of people coming to see them twice a year. And so Zach very graciously offered to using some of his grant funding to pay for a significant portion of these staff members attending this two-day session in Wisconsin. And I think you're going to really enjoy what you hear tonight because it really is right up our alley. So we're excited to hear from this team, and you're...go ahead whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you. It was actually very exciting, and we were able to witness a number of things that, you know, I had 32 years in education coming up here myself, that I didn't really expect to see. And one of the things that I walked away with for Menominee Falls Continuous Improvement site is it was that there is always a better way, and there's some things that, you know, people haven't thought about. It's a systems-wide approach, which means there'd be some level of consistency there. But as we were talking, you know, about it at the workshops and the visits to the classrooms and so forth, we walked away with, we certainly have the people and the talent in Northfield Public Schools to accomplish this. So what you're about to see is just a brief presentation of what we saw, and what we are really capable of is a school district. So I'll let Hope take over from here.
We want to thank Dave Craft for driving all of us there. The weather wasn't that great, and he powered through. So we went across the state of Wisconsin to Menominee Falls. And just to give you a little information about that town, it's fairly similar in size to us, 4,000 students, northwest of Milwaukee. You can see the city population is fairly close to Northfield's. Four elementary schools, a middle school and a high school. In terms of a demographic comparison, you can see that they are actually in some ways more ethnically diverse. However, their EL population is about 5% less than ours, and our sped population is slightly higher than theirs. But there you can see the ethnic breakdown. Socioeconomically, we have about a 10% higher FRP rate in our district than they do. And then I'm going to pass it along to Inger.
Hi.
And if members of the team could introduce themselves to the board, please.
Hello, my name is Inger Hansen, and I'm an instructional coach at Bridgewater Elementary. So one of the key points for me in my tour there and my time there was that it was a, as we mentioned, system-wide approach. So they were building a brand across their entire district, not just with teachers, which was maybe 50% of their employees. It was the school board, the food staff, the grounds, the EAs, the teachers, of course, the parents. And it was a system-wide approach that went into place because for two years, they had received a failing report for one of their subgroups. So the superintendent partnered with the Studer Group and with the Waukesha...I have to look at...Waukesha County Technical College to fundamentally change the way they did business as a school district. They have clearly defined expectations for all their employees, from teachers throughout, as I said, food service, grounds, crew. And they've increased their college and career readiness for reading and math. They've improved the culture for learning for all of their students. They've increased the staff workforce engagement and development, and they have demonstrated safe, effective, and efficient operations across the board. So it was a fundamentally changing experience for all of us, and for me to watch their admin in front of us, it was a full-brand approach to delivering education for all students. Thank you.
So they do a lot of measuring in Menominee Falls, and they have very short feedback cycles, both for their students and for their board. So every 45 days, their board is getting reports, not just about student achievement, but like Inger said, every department in the district. So there are five pillars that they're measuring, but the central pillar, of course, and the reason why we're all here is for student achievement, and that is first and foremost at the heart of everything that they do. The scorecards, I'm not going to link you to them now, but they literally produce these scorecards for every department and every level of their district. And they're quite detailed, and they're specific measurable goals. Oh, this was our new one, sorry. So how have they done? Now, they have a lot of data that you can pull from. I happen to pull the MAP scores because that's something that we also give. And you can see back in time, the percentage of kids who were college and career-ready according to the MAP scale was quite low, and you can see this very steady improvement trend. They also...they're tracking all of the assessments that they give. Some don't have this clear of a trend, but the point is that they're looking at all of this data regularly.
So we had a chance to visit classrooms, and the story I had to tell that relates to this is that I went to a first grade classroom, right? And we're talking about goal orientation. Everyone has a goal from superintendent, the board superintendent, right down to first graders. And so I met with my first grader, and he has a data book. He knew what his data was, and his goals. He takes out a piece of paper about this wide, you know, eight and a half by eleven by eight and a half, and it had his goal at the top. And he began to read it for me. He started saying, "My goal...my goal is to read smoothly and with expression without using my finger." Started with his finger, and he moved it back. And then, at the bottom, it said tallies, and because he'd just done that, he wrote a tally. Every child has their own goal. And so how that relates to continuous improvement not being a program, it's a cultural mindset from school board to the individual first grade child is goal orientation, and with scorecards and so forth. And what I think is significant about this, they talked a little bit about how since continuous improvement is a mindset, it's not a program, it's not something you buy, and then you look at that first grader's reading score because you bought this program. It's more toward goal orientation and the mindset that, you know, everybody's going to set a goal, we're all going to achieve our goals, we're going to do it together, we're going to collaborate. One of the things that they said you have to...we have to move away from, or they had to move away from, was chasing things, chasing curriculum, chasing, you know, different instructional programs, because it's not...it's a philosophy of how we do business. It's not a program any longer when you talk about continuous improvement. And typically, we've looked at continuous improvement across the board as, you know, so how have they done in the reading and the math, and what can we buy to make it better? It's not about buying things. Okay?
I'm Carrie Duba. I am a school psychologist at Northfield High School. So one of the things that we talked about, and Dave mentioned this when we were all there, is our impression was how close we are in Northfield. There are many, many things that we have in place that we're doing well, and so it really felt like this wasn't something that was unattainable. It really mostly felt like this was a little bit of alignment and organization and kind of just closing the loop on things. So we looked at the things that we already have in place. For example, we have PLCs and MTSS. These are the questions that they asked themselves, and then what's in bold are sort of the programs and the things that we have in place, the behaviors that we have already adopted in our district that kind of answer those questions. So we have PLCs, and they've been working very effectively. We've had that structured in to our district for some time now. All of our buildings are looking at how we provide the intervention support for all students through a multi-tiered system of support. We are getting better every year at being good, authentic consumers of data. We collect data, and it doesn't just sit on a shelf. We're getting really, really good at using it. That's going to be kind of the thing that really drives a continuous improvement program, clearly. We have ways of involving everybody through our student surveys and thought exchange. Did somebody talk about the survey fatigue? Does one of you talk about that? One of the things that we asked is they are constantly going to their staff and their parents and their student, and they're doing surveys of them. And we kind of asked, I think we were...were we the ones that asked, or did somebody else ask and said, "What about this whole idea of like survey fatigue? Like, everyone gets sick of being surveyed, and they're like, 'Please stop.'" And the superintendent said, "Here's the thing. Once you start transparently and authentically acting on the information you get from every single survey, everybody starts to buy in." Because then it really becomes that means of contributing to the process and having your voice be part of that process. So we have those in place, and we're getting closer. So it is just about like kind of bringing it all together. And then our board commitment to MTSS and our instructional cognitive coaches. So we have some good well-researched practice that we're already using the district. And this is the other thing that I wanted to be sure that I spoke about, because we all had different things that were sort of our aha moments. And this plus delta kind of way of looking at their practices is something that everybody does in their classroom, at their meetings, for every lesson. Hope mentioned short-cycle data review and short-cycle goal setting. This is something that teachers do for every lesson. It's pretty impressive. Every single classroom had this up for every single lesson that they did. So in Northfield, some of our pluses are over there. Those are the things we already have. That looks great. The delta are the things that we need to just really look at building, right? We're not quite there yet in Northfield. And sort of my aha moment was this piece of getting serious about all kids succeeding. The thing that amazed me was that the goals were things like 100% of our students... The thing that amazed me was that the goals were things like 100% of our students will, right? So we say every student, and I think that's important. And I think it is a wise decision to say every. But they say 100% and there is no place to hide behind 100%, right? And even, I mean, that really stuck out to me. And so I think like that's one thing that we really have to keep coming back to, is that every means 100%, right? So then just, the rest of that is just refining our practice that we already have in place.
So as we mentioned before, the feedback cycle is shorter. So what they are measuring is progress. How are these students doing? How is the food service? How is the front of the house or the admin staff doing as far as meeting their goals? You can't set a goal for the end of the year and then go back and intervene on 50, 40% of the people that didn't make the goal. There's no more time in the year. So this continuous improvement is you're being transparent, you are having this immediate feedback so that you are measuring progress. And then you're able to go in and intervene on the issues or what the superintendent would call the pain points. What are the pain points for each organization? Is it data entry or students entering the building or busing? It didn't, it didn't matter what the item was, it was the approach to it, the feedback cycle, and then the continuous improvement to progress toward that 100% goal.
Good evening, I'm Rose Turnercliff. I am a MTSS teacher for reading at the middle school. And one of the things that no one has mentioned that I think is important is that this school district was ready for about 180 visitors that day and they ended up entertaining 268 people. And to just watch how the students gave the tours, the students showed us things, that was really impressive to me. And people just went about their business like they were used to these strange people walking through their world. And I really appreciated that, to actually see their day in progress, including the fact that when everyone else went out for a walk, because, gosh, I had this bum foot, I was left behind to watch the bags and somebody burnt the popcorn in the school, in the cafeteria where they have their school store. And so we had to have a fire drill. And it was a beautiful day, so it was all right. But even the fire, even the fire drill was well-organized. I have to see things in writing so I can remember them later. So I took some pictures when I was there. This is a picture of a slide that I took in a high school classroom, an English classroom, just stating what the teachers can do. And I realize that's hard for you to see, but their basic questions, their basic jobs are to make sure that all the standards are written in a language that students can understand and to do the progress monitoring towards those goals. And then to keep the students engaged, not only in doing the work, but in coming up with their mission statement. And then, more importantly, knowing how to evaluate the work they had done and what to do to improve their learning. So this is a plan, do, study, act. The PDSA, like Carrie said, it's present in every single classroom. She also talked about the 100% piece. And you're going to see in the middle of the screen that goal of 80%. I just want to explain a couple of the things that are on that screen. The goal says, "100% of students will be able to use numbers and operations to solve real-world problems in order to meet their growth target from fall of 2016 to spring of 2017." So on this particular focus, that's underneath the plan, it says, "I can," they use "I can" statements all the time, taking the standards and putting them into "I can" statements. "I can use the standard algorithm for division." And so in the plan part, they are going to fluently add, subtract, multiply, and divide multi-digit decimals using the standard algorithm for each operation. And in the lower right-hand corner, they, I can tell you that the second hour class had reached, 92% of the students reached their goal in fourth hour, 91; in fifth hour, 92; in sixth hour, 87; and in seventh hour, 81. So it's a little bit interesting, I think, to see how they did that and how they did their analysis of that. There's a lot more information on there, but we can move on. This is an example from that high school classroom teacher, again, how she would use the PDSA for a lesson. In the middle, you can see that she is doing something with clauses on how to have students use independent and dependent clauses. And in the box that says "study," there were some things that were very successful and it was very obvious underneath that room for improvement that those students did not enjoy the assignments that they were doing on their iPads. It was too, they liked pencil and paper better. It was confusing to them. All right? And this is a slide from, I think, a seventh grade health room. And the students were actually answering these questions in small groups. So what did we do well? That's the, taking a look at your data. What do you need more or less of? What might you want to add to it? And what do you think that you might need to have that hasn't been done yet? Which is probably a question that not every teacher is willing or able to do at the end of every unit. So I liked that question as well. And they were doing sticky notes and then putting all their responses up on the board. We talk about data and sometimes it's hard to, it's hard to take time to look at all the different kinds of data. I liked this example, so I took a picture of this. In the picture on the right, they had asked the students, "What was the most helpful classroom strategy that they used?" I'm sorry, "The most helpful classroom strategy to use at home to study for the test?" And that piece of the river that has all the dots was to use Quizlet. That's the one, the thing that they liked doing. In the classroom, they had some other options. They liked studying with a partner and they liked Daily Dozen. But the one with the most dots is to do the review game. So as you look at that, if I was the teacher, I'd say, "Hey, I'm going to stop prepping for about four of those things that are up there and just let them do the things that they really want to do." So actually using data and figuring out how it's going to help kids.
Hi, good evening, I'm Paula Bargary. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Sibley. And I just want to say how honored I was that I got to go. Being a classroom teacher, we don't always get positions or opportunities like this. So I really felt like, wow, this is a cool opportunity. So, you know, being the classroom teacher, being in the trenches every day, there were a lot of revelations that I had. In the beginning, excuse me, Dr. Greco was incredibly intelligent and every other word basically went over my head. And I was like, "Why am I here? What is going on?" But as time went on and as I too got to go into classrooms and really see these first, second, sixth, 12th graders talk about, "Why am I learning?" I mean, they owned their learning. It wasn't me saying, "Oh, what homework do you have tonight?" They knew exactly what their goals were and how they were going to get there. So every student that we spoke to, they could articulate why they were learning it, what they were going to learn, how they were going to learn it. They talked a lot about just the validity of common assessments, how from elementary school to elementary school, we have these common assessments across the board because, you know, there's the MAP test three times a year. There's the MCA test once a year. There's the ACT once a year. So a lot of times, those assessments are too far out. That data, we can't really do that much about. And so I think for them, in their very quick 15 or 45-day review cycle, that's where those common assessments really come into play. It's because of those that's really driving their next planning of instruction. So just the feedback cycle and that, everyone's a part of it. Everyone's using the same language. Everyone's doing that plus delta. Everybody is doing, "What's my plan, study, do, act?" If you're a first grader, if you work in the kitchen, if you work as the custodian, everybody knows what that is. I think that's what we were continually in awe of, was that the general consistency across the board. And for, I think, so many people in Menominee Falls, there was just this sense of pride that they belonged in this school district and that they were just as helpful regardless of what their position was. So that, that was really amazing. Students transparent with their learning. Every student, regardless of what grade they were in, they could flip, open their binder. For me, as a classroom teacher, one thing I thought that was, Dr. Greco would say, stupid, stupid simple. All the students had, for example, all of their like math tests in the same place so that they could go back and see, "Oh, gosh, it looks like I really nailed algebra, but geometry, ooh, not, not so much." So it's basically this constant reflection for them on their learning. It's not just, "Quick, study it, the test is tomorrow, good, I passed, I'm moving on." But they just really are internalizing what's going on for them because they want a future. They want to move on. They want to be able to someday have a career that they enjoy, have a life that they enjoy. I think especially for me, this is my, let's see, ninth year in Northfield. I've been in a few other districts, so I'm still, I wouldn't say a seasoned teacher, but I've definitely seen a few things come and go. And so for me, I just felt like this is something that's not a hoop. Menominee Falls is in their sixth year of implementing this. And you just see that for all the teachers, for everyone involved, this is something that is working. This is something that is making students learn. Every student learn. And I think for all of us, that's, that's the shift. That's where the culture comes into play, that we are working really hard with our gifted students. We're working really hard with our EL population. And we've got to come up with different strategies. We've got to figure out how to get them to grow as well. So I just want to say thanks again for this opportunity. It was amazing.
Wow, thank you. That's an amazing presentation. I know board members may have comments or questions. Give everyone a few minutes to think.
You had said that all the students could articulate what I interpret as their purpose for learning. How do you think that culture, cultural change came about?
So there's a commitment from the top all the way down to the bottom. And like one of our presenters had mentioned that, you know, when you're asked to fill out a survey and then you actually see some of those things happening, that people buy in. So it's a cultural change in terms of, the expectation is, is that we're not opting out of this. This is not one of those, "This too shall pass" things. This is a mindset, it's a philosophy, and what we believe is goal orientation. And success breeds success. So my little first grader knew, he had to drop his finger faster than, you know, lightning so that he could put that tally mark down there. Another mindset, "That's my goal. I have a goal and I'm going to achieve my goal." And when you've got everybody doing that and everybody's held accountable in a very, I'm going to say caring and loving, I bet I can go to that extreme, but, you know, real graceful way, it becomes part of the culture. So one of the things that struck me was that, that you walk through the hallway, like, you know, Hope was saying, you walk through the hallway, when someone was approaching you, if you're by yourself, they'd get 10 feet out, they'd make eye contact, five feet from there, they'd talk to you, without exception. It's part of the culture. So I think it's because success breeds success and people see it working. Does anybody else have some?
I just have, sort of pragmatically speaking, the thing that was impressive about how the kids own their own learning is this language of standards-based learning. So there was this transparency and the connection while, while MCA testing, obviously, they didn't do MCA testing, but they have summative testing. And so when the kids were able to speak to their own competency to the standards on a Tuesday in February or whatever, you know, that builds day after day after day so that you know where you are way before you get to that summative test. And the kids know where they are. And I think that's the piece that really shifted that off of us as the educators and onto the students who could take charge of that.
First of all, thank you very much for this, for going to Menominee Falls and learning all these things. It's really great that you took the time and that Zach set it up. And thank you for everyone involved. And a lot of it, I mean, it's all really exciting and it's a lot to digest, so my, I'll probably have more questions later on. My first question, I guess, is, I really liked what Carrie said about, we need to get serious about 100% of kids succeeding. What I've seen sometimes in site improvement plans is one year, we don't make a certain goal, so we reframe it so that it's, we rewrite it so that we can get it in a way that we can maybe do it. So I'm thinking, you know, there's a difference between 60% of students will get a B or better and 100% of students will get an F or better. So, I mean, how do you write these goals so that the 100% is really meaningful as an improvement rather than ratifying that everybody's special or whatever?
I could add one thing to that. There is also money tied to teachers being successful or any of the people being successful in reaching their goals. And if you didn't reach a goal the first year, that money stayed in a pool and you could try for it a second year and you could try for it a third year. And if after three years it didn't happen, then we could turn it back in and make that money be available to some other people.
And the money that was, what Rose was talking about, it's actually, they gave a lot of thought for how they were going to incentivize things. And they, they do not do it at an individual level, they do it at a building or department level. So everybody in a building is contributing to that building goal. If the building reaches their goal, then they're eligible for that pot of funds for that year. And then if they don't make it, it goes back in for the next year. So it's, that was kind of neat for us to hear, that it's, that it's really a group approach to achieving goals. I was going to share one, Noel, this made me think of your question and Rob, to you too. When I sat in the first classroom, I thought, "Oh, they put their best kids, the most articulate kids, everybody who's got the greatest data binders right in front of us." So somebody actually was thinking along the same lines I was and said, "Well, is there anybody in here who didn't meet their goal?" And this little guy in the back of the room pipes up and he's, "Well, I didn't, I didn't meet the goal because they have their data on the wall for the class too." And he said, "I didn't meet it yet." And he said, "But I'm going, I'm going for help with so-and-so and I'm going to do it again." And there was no embarrassment, there was no, I mean, there was almost a joyful sharing of this kid was going to get another chance. And I think that's also part of the mindset, Rob, that they, they, these kids really do feel like, "I can do this. You know, I know where I'm going and I know that I have the support to be able to get where I'm going."
Margaret. This is really exciting. I worked with Studer Group, but in healthcare setting.
They were, they started.
Yes, exactly. Quit Studer. And it is, it's a cultural thing when you reinforce the positive. Instead of looking at it as you are failing this, it's, you haven't reached this goal yet. And when you turn it into the positive, and, you know, we preach the 5-10 rule too, it just changes how people are interacting with each other and it builds relationship. So, you know, it works in healthcare and I'm thrilled to hear that they're reaching out to education as well. So this is really exciting. Culture, I mean, culture matters.
The other thing, they've been at this for six years, so we continually talked to ourselves about that and reflected on that. But they started small to grow, to grow fast in the sense that they went out and said, "Who's willing to try this?" So they got their top 30% innovators in all the different departments to just try it. Like, you know, "Don't be afraid and take this risk." They also changed the mindset that data, "Don't be afraid of the data. School board, don't be afraid of the data. Teachers, you know, this is something that builds into our culture and just like you're saying and speaking to, it is that data from which we can grow 100% of our students." And it was just a it is that data from which we can grow 100% of our students. And it was just a cultural change for everyone there. So that was very exciting.
Other questions?
So my question is a good follow-up on what you were saying. So I was curious because you saw them in year six, and I assume this is a journey, and you said, you know, year whatever, one or whatever, they had the top 30% trying it. So I'm curious about that journey and what else you heard. And I'm assuming that we're growing pains and trade-offs. You know, change can be hard. So is there more about that that you learned?
They definitely spoke of the pain points along the way. And I think one of the hardest things for them was, what does every child learning look like? And what does excellence look like? And so at the end, there was a whole panel of basically all the admin people on the stage who just fielded questions. And so there were a lot of people saying, we've spent a lot of time discussing what is excellence? Where do we want to go? And I think, living in this kind of niche community, there's a lot of opinions about what excellence is. And I think a lot of those opinions are really powerful and really strong. It's just we need to be a little bit more united. And I guess that's the piece that was impressive there. Someone else want to speak on that?
There were teachers who maybe didn't agree. And because there was common language and because it was so transparent and because it was so public, are probably no longer employed. They talked a lot about when they want to hire a new person, they're hiring people right within their own system. We haven't talked at all really about the training and the amount of training that all the teachers and all the people who work in that district received, and that was really amazing. Some from outside, you know, from the Studer people or from the community college, but then the teachers who are making changes, saying to another teacher, you know, this is what we're going to do when we teach this unit, or this is what has to happen. And there will be really uncomfortable times for some people, there's no doubt.
Amy, you have a question?
Well, as you know, it's my first time up here, and I think what a great way of starting to hear this presentation because I could hear the inspiration in all of you and the enthusiasm behind what you saw. And that affected me as well. And so my question to you is, and I'm not going to hold you to any of your answers, but as you are taking this inspiration back to your own classroom or back to your own schools or thinking in the future what can be done with it, where do you see it heading? What would you like to see happen?
So I think we're all in agreement on what I'm about to say. We had a lot of conversations. Where we see this going is you going. We see the school board going. Was it March?
Yeah.
And Matt heading out there with you, I'll lend you my nine-passenger van. That's fun. But I think that's what we really come up with. One of the things that struck me, I talked to a number of school board members at lunch and workshops and so forth, and one of the things that struck me was that every single person to a person on the school board supported this. And so when they talked to teachers, teachers talked to school board members, there was this conversation, there was the same conversation. Superintendent, you know, teachers teach you, your superintendent, principals, principals, you know, everyone. So I would say that the answer to that question is in March, having the school board go out with superintendent and see what you think. I didn't, I just tell Matt to, I had the opportunity to go to the superintendent's house for, was it, I think it might have been dinner, but. And, you know, I started thinking, well, you know, what would be the purpose behind that? It would be to ask questions that, you know, Matt might want to know. And I thought, well, I think I'm going to let Matt go on here. I wouldn't ask all the right questions because it's not my world, and you'd ask all the questions you'd want to know. And so if we're going to move ahead with this, I think to do well, I think the next step would be for the school board and superintendent to go out and see it.
I would also love to see our union reps go with you guys because then they can bring back what they saw. So it would be a unified approach to that experience. And when we were there with all 200-some people, there were school boards that were there together, or it was the second round of the entire school board. It was all the principals of a district, you know. So the training, there are different levels of training, whether you're a school board member or a custodial staff or a teacher. So there were different levels in the training that you received, but it did start with the admin and the superintendent. So that would be exciting.
And then I would add, from the grassroots kind of perspective, that I walked away from this saying, I can do this tomorrow in my classroom. And that doesn't always happen. And so I have done plus delta in my classroom. I have done an example of the PDSA, and fifth graders are great at reflection and feedback. And they are great at telling you like what worked and what didn't. And so just kind of opening the door for those types of conversations. So as wonderful as it is for us to stand up here and say, this is so great, and if you all are able to attend, that's great too, but I also want you to know that a classroom teacher, a coach, any of us up here, we can start implementing this stuff right now. And so for me, that was the most rewarding because my students are going to benefit from that. I've always kind of wanted to be that teacher who has the learning targets on the whiteboard and everyone's got it all written down, but I didn't kind of maybe understand the validity behind it. And so after this, I have those ACAN statements on the board written in fifth-grade-friendly language. I have them writing down those statements in their notebook, like, yeah, we are going to plot points and you're going to understand why. And so it's just bringing kind of all that, almost testing language to the forefront so that when they are approached with these, you know, kind of mind-bending tests, that they feel prepared, that they are ready, but that they're taking ownership. One day last week, I did have a fifth grader who was like, could I take this math sheet home with me tonight and work on it? Yep. Yes, you sure can. No, it's not homework, but yes, you go for it. And so just that kind of evolution of owning their learning. It's, for me, that's really the most important thing. So, thank you.
Paula, can I ask you a follow-up question? So have you been able to share this within your PLC?
In little kind of tidbits, I felt like I needed to try it first to kind of fall flat on my face and see what happens first. And then I did like a really concrete example. I took something that I knew how to teach really well, folding an origami crane, and just taking them through that learning process. And when no one could fold a bird first, I said, does anyone look around and say, oh, you're so stupid because you can't fold a bird? And they're all like, no. And I said, that's the same thing that's happening in math and reading. Oh, the smarty makes smarties say. So that was a great, concrete piece for everyone to be like, we're all on this learning journey, we're just on a different, you know, we're on a different path at a different time. So that piece was huge for me. And, you know, there's a lot going on curriculum-wise in the elementary schools, so I feel like many of my colleagues are extremely overwhelmed. So this, it kind of has to go with timing, right? You can't just dump new things on people when they're not ready for it. So this will evolve, this will come through, but I kind of need that opportune time to kind of pull them in. But, good question. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, other questions or comments? Okay. Dr. Hillman, did you have?
I do, actually. And what was said by a number of people here is that it feels like Northfield is close. A lot of pieces, in fact, when these folks came back, some individually, they almost, several of you said to me, wow, we're not too far from this. And very, as you said, very excited about it. And I just, I think if you think about what you heard tonight, what you heard is that there was a very clear and shared vision, right? Something we just have talked about. While it was not explicitly said until the end, it was very clear to me that very strong, healthy relationships are developed in this district, they're essential, they're the foundation. Though they weren't explicitly stated, the fact that I'm comfortable in the back to be able to say, hey, I'm not there yet, or when someone sees you in the hallway, they greet you and they are finding you and they're giving you eye contact, that leads to me to believe that they have focused on relationships as the foundational component of it. Then we get to something that we've all talked about, about growth mindset, right? Growth mindset and grit is integral in this whole process. The feedback cycles, other things that we've talked about with the association like Q Comp in terms of the incentivizing piece. And then we get to things where, you just didn't hear this, you heard a lot of reading math examples, but it is absolutely applicable to everywhere, whether we're talking about the industrial arts wing, or we're talking about mathematics, or reading, or AP psychology, or you name it, this approach, the Plan New Study Act, is applicable to everyone. It's not something that, oh, it's just this piece on math, science, and reading again because that's what the state test thing is about. No, this is something for everyone to be able to use. And I think the other piece that's really important is it's unifying. You know, it's not a piece that you do this and we're all doing it. And then at the end of the day, it gets back to something that we've been wanting for a long time, which is personalization. Because the learning goals are personalized, and when I own my learning, I am personalizing. And we all know how it feels when we're in control or feel in control of that process. And at the end of the day, it equally or similarly supports all college and career pathways that also happens to be one of our near-term priorities, right? Because everybody knew it wasn't that yours was better than mine, it's, this is where I'm at, and I'm okay with that. So what I'm really excited about hearing from, of course, you can never replicate. You know, the thought that you can replicate another school's program is fallacy. Research tells us that over and over. But these folks brought something back that they learned that we can look and see, how can we apply these principles, or how can we make this kind of piece the next step on our continuous improvement journey? So I, as you could tell, I'm pretty jazzed about it. And the reason is because there are so many things that we are right there with, and it's a unifying mindset or philosophy which we're very close on. And I'm not saying that, you know, this is, you know, down, you know, do this lock, stock, and barrel, but what this diverse group of stakeholders in front of you, from all parts of our district to all levels, with varying levels of experience in the district, come back and say the same things, that tells me there's something for us to look more at here. And I think it's the logical next step to tie together a number of the things that we've talked about and help us have what I consider to be a breakthrough. We need a breakthrough to get to that next level, and this kind of approach could provide us the breakthrough. So those are my thoughts.
Ellen?
So where do you think the next steps are? We heard from the group here. What are you thinking, Zach?
Well, I, actually, coincidentally, Zach has already reserved us seven more slots in March. Though what I do want to caution people on is that we do need to do a little checking because I think, I think if the board went, we would be violating the open meeting law. So we would have to get a little bit of feedback on that. And I think it's important to make sure that we send another representative group of folks, if there are people on the board who are interested. It is a two-day commitment. I mean, we do have to go, we do have seven slots, Zach, I think.
Yeah, we could potentially get more.
So, you know, because these things fill up really quickly, so we reserve the spots. And now it's a matter of, I think, taking yet another representative group, I think, a few board members. I am certainly willing to go, a few additional, you know, teachers. And again, trying to get that collaborative grassroots kind of piece about how we're all working together because it's a unified piece. The final thing that I'll say, Ellen, that really makes me thrilled about this, is that it assumes that every person who works for the school district, and I would even argue beyond that, who's part of the community, has invested interest in the outcome. You know, it's not, we're not separating people who work in child nutrition, you know, from folks who work in the district office, from teachers or EAs. It says, everybody. We're all in this together and we're all moving ahead. So I think, thinking creatively about, are there other stakeholder groups within the district who may not traditionally have been considered for this kind of opportunity? We probably need to start putting our money where our mouth is and say, okay, we may need to bring, you know, one of our custodial stewards to something like this so that they can see how that particular piece works. You get my drift of making sure that we expand the people who we would traditionally think should go to a professional development opportunity like this. So I think the next step is talking about this a little bit with DPAC, getting another group of people to go so that we can confer and say, what are the things that we have in place? Confirming what this team has said that we have in place? What are the next pieces that we think make sense for Northfield? And then determining what parts of the plan can we move ahead? Again, many of the things we either have in place and just need to refine, or are almost there, or have started, you know, all those kinds. What are the things, the next steps we need to take in all of those areas to realize that breakthrough?
And each of us did receive a book. Does anyone remember the name of it? Maximize Performance. Maximize Performance. So if any of you would like to look at that, I mean, I'm currently reading a few other things, so it's one of them to read that. You're more than welcome to flip through.
And I've also, we scanned in the document that they provided to us as far as articles from the New York Times and other write-ups that have been done about the district. So Mary Grace will be able to push that out to all of you digitally.
That's great.
And then one last thing, one of the biggest hurdles that the district had to come to terms with and deal with was their early release for PLC time. We have late start. So one of their biggest hurdles is already in place for us here and embedded in our day-to-day schedules. So that's a great starting point.
So board members, any other further comments or questions? Any other further comments or questions from the presenters?
I have one that I'd like to say.
Yes, Rose?
This kind of goes to what you were saying, Matt, and I think I have my numbers fairly close, but they were looking at the student contact information for their families. And it was something like 80% of those student contacts had one or more errors. We'll think about that, a wrong phone number or a number that was transposed. And just thinking about what a difference that made when the contacts with families was really there and they knew how to get ahold of each family within the district and that they weren't just going into your junk emails along the way or whatever. But that was interesting to me to think about how that would affect somebody in the district who was not a teacher. And the custodial staff was unbelievable. I mean, you couldn't not find the bathroom because there'd be three people to tell you where the bathroom was.
And then bragged about it on the way, too. So, you did good work.
Any other final comments from presenters? It's been fun to hear, well, certainly, we can get a sense for the excitement and the enthusiasm, and it was fun to hear some of the stories behind some of the programs, you know, just sort of some of the real-life stories of what happened. I feel like I was almost there in terms of getting the level of excitement. So that was really fun. And I agree that it was a great way to start off our first school board meeting of 2017. So, thank you.
So with that, we will move on to, we have, the next is an item for individual action, which is the District Assessment Coordinator Grant Proposal.
So in your packet, you had a description of a proposal for accepting a grant that would allow us to make our district assessment coordinator position, which for many, many years has been a part-time position and typically always part, well, not typically, always partnered with another job within the district. And so what we've done is we've, over the years, we have seen how the power of strong relationships and data together can really move student performance and help people take instructional risks and modify their pedagogy in a way because they have quite a bit of data support and can look at short-term goals and measuring what matters and those kinds of things. But as you know, we always look at, what is the offset? So if we're looking to say, we want to do an increase in this particular area, what's an area that we might be able to find an offset because we really try to live out being good stewards? So when I need money, I look to Zach Pruitt, and I talk with Zach because of the real tight nature that the district continues to have with Northfield Promise and the Healthy Community Initiative, and because we're doing more and more shared work around looking how we can use data to improve between Northfield Promise's goals that are very similar to what the district's goals are. So Zach and I discussed the possibility of HCI through their Northfield Promise grants to be able to provide the district $20,000 to be able to make the district assessment coordinator position full-time for the second semester of the 2016-17 school year. And in your packet, I described the fact that what we assume is that, as Hope Langston, our current district assessment coordinator, would become full-time for the second semester. She has harder for assignment, which is an instructional coach at Bridgewater, following what we heard from the Menominee Falls visit. We assume that an instructional coaching position most often would be filled by someone within the district, and then another person hired to replace that individual. And so our estimate of around $16,850, could be a little bit more than that. The $20,000 would cover the entire cost of being able to try having the assessment coordinator full-time for the second semester. There's a number of positive There's a number of positive pieces that we believe that can come from that, including alignment with our strategic plan, as I've described in the proposal, specifically looking at building and fostering relationships, commitment to social and emotional health for all. And as you know, we are looking at how can we more intentionally teach social-emotional skills to our students? And as we're looking at that process, having some additional support from the measurement perspective would be really helpful for that. Again, one of our core near-term priorities, which is equitable opportunities and support for all career and college paths, again, that aligns with both the Northfield Promise and the World's Best Workforce Academic Benchmarks. And it, again, also helping people create feedback loops, as was discussed this evening, in robust core instruction. So looking at, how can I set some shorter-term goals that can make us more effective instruction by failing faster, essentially? Learning what doesn't work, so that we can more quickly get to what works. And so what I'm asking you for this evening is to consider approving, accepting the grant from HCI, Northfield Promise, and allowing us to use it to try having the district assessment coordinator full-time for the second semester, which we would then review and look at the possibility of something, keeping that going in terms of sustaining it moving forward. But the commitment would only be through the end of this school year. I know that there's some, there's some desire on the part of HCI, Northfield Promise, to potentially continue providing some financial support, but due to the way that their grants are authorized every year, there can be no promise at this point. So simply asking for it through the end of the first semester, excuse me, through the end of the second semester, and reevaluating before June 1st as to what we're going to do for next year with it.
Excellent. This is an item for individual action, so prior to questions and comments, is there a motion to accept the $20,000 grant from HCI to fund expanding the district assessment coordinator position from part-time to full-time for the second semester of the 2016-17 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Margaret. Okay. Questions, comments board members have regarding the motion? Ellen?
I guess I would just say I am really supportive of this. I think I would, it would be recognizing work that I've seen Hope probably doing in her volunteer hours, and I think if we can get it, being part of her actual position, you know, it'll just be a much more powerful thing for the district, and I love that it's lined up with the strategic plan. I have one question, which I think I've already asked Dr. Hillman about, but I thought it might be helpful for the board to hear, is just because this position has always been part of, Hope had other things under her plate, so we would be hiring for her, the other responsibilities in order for her to be able to take this on, so we're not asking her to do a full-time position and her other pieces, right?
Well, we had considered that. It's joking, that was a joke.
Anybody could do it.
But that's exactly right, is that what we would do is that, should this position be approved this evening, what will happen tomorrow, or Wednesday, hopefully tomorrow, is that we would post basically the part-time instructional coach position that Hope currently has at Bridgewater. We have a district policy that that has to be posted for at least five days before we can move on it. So the hope would be that we'd be able to take care of that within five to seven business days. Once a person's identified for that position, then, and it's a part-time position, to be clear, then what we would do is post for the position that would most likely be vacated at that point. And again, so we, of course, want to try the best we can have these positions in place before Hope were to go full-time, but it's a piece that, because a lot of it is happening internally, we can be flexible with.
Other questions or comments? No?
I really support this. And as a board, we can support HCI as work, but as a community, right into the camera, we can also support HCI. They do fine work, and we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent comment, thank you, Ellen. Other questions or comments? I have two questions. So is there any concern that because it's a part-time position, we wouldn't necessarily get the candidates for that?
In terms of, depending on the area, I may have a concern, but most likely, what we're looking at is, we'll be looking at some kind of position that most likely requires an elementary teaching license. And if we think about where our areas of greatest application continues to be in the area of elementary education, we're not getting the 300 to 400 applications that we used to get, but we feel there's still a very strong market even mid-year for individuals who are applying with an elementary education license, specifically since we are, have just gotten past graduation, and those students who have student taught and have just recently graduated are most likely either looking for some kind of substitute teaching position, and we would offer them an opportunity, even in a part-time position, to be able to gain some very valuable experience.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. So, yeah, and I agree with Ellen. I loved the proposal and the way you specifically detailed how it aligns with the strategic plan. And I think when Carrie Duba said, "Good, authentic consumers of data will be key to driving continuous improvement," I mean, there it is right there. So I fully intend to support the motion as well, so.
And I think the key is that, that good consumer of data happens when healthy, professional relationships are in place, and that, what is what I really believe will provide Hope that time, to be able to spend time with people, developing that quality relationship and getting those pedagogical breakthroughs.
Excellent, thank you. This is exciting. Okay. So, is there other questions or comments?
I just have a quick question. I think it's a great idea, too. I'm a believer in data. I was just wondering where you would house her on a day-to-day basis with this position?
So currently, Hope's, that, we have not explicitly talked about that, but what Hope does right now is when she's not fulfilling her instructional coach role at Bridgewater, she has an office at Northfield Middle School. We intentionally did that to try to separate, that when she was doing district work, she would have a place to hang her hat. I think that that will most likely be where she stays, but I envision her being more, she's very mobile. If you watch Hope, anywhere she goes, she's got her backpack, and she's moving. So while there might be a technical office, a place where she may work out of, what I envision is that where she's hanging her hat and working is in different buildings every day, depending on who she's supporting at the time. So she really will, will really be working in every building, but will most likely just continue to office out of the middle school.
Okay. Excellent. So we have a motion and a second for the full-time proposal for district assessment coordinator. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We will move on now to items for, in the consent grouping, is there anything anyone would wish to pull from the consent grouping? Okay. All those in favor of, oh, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Ellen. Is there a second? Second by Zach. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have three items for information, the school, first being the School Board Policy 501. And there was, just so board members are aware, there was some further information in the table file regarding the, this School Board Policy 501. Let's retrieve that out of there.
And the only change in the table file was that, when we modified the policy, we had some good feedback saying that we needed to, there were some pieces that we removed that were really from the University of Minnesota and Minskew's definitions, and since we removed those, we removed those references, which we had added when we modified this last spring. So really, the policy is the same, the only piece that's different would be the cross-reference that you see on 501-4, that particular page, just basically removing the policy reference, excuse me. So it's at the bottom that we removed that. And basically, what we're looking at here is Policy 501, a first reading, and it is a policy that's very familiar to board members, because we actually just had updated last spring. And one of the key things is that we always, of course, have to be mindful of decisions that affect education that come out of the state Supreme Court, and of course, other federal courts and those kinds of pieces. And in October, the Supreme Court decision, State versus Haywood, was delivered and basically changed 40 years of Minnesota case law that had defined a firearm as including a BB gun. And as you recall, we worked on this last spring, defining what a firearm meant, to include something that ejected projectile by compressed air or gas. That was based upon the best, the case law that had been in Minnesota for 40 years at the time. And when the state Supreme Court came down with the State versus Haywood decision this past October, they reversed that ruling, and now have very clearly said that a BB gun is not a firearm in the view of the state of Minnesota. And so we always want to make sure that our policies are aligning with what the current case law is. And so really, this policy, which again, is a first reading, so we're not, you know, actually taking any action tonight, but you're going to notice some very basic changes that really focus on the definition of what a firearm is, so that we are in alignment with what the current case law is in Minnesota.
Okay. Board members, questions or comments about the first reading of this policy? Margaret?
I'm a little confused, so help me understand this. When we say that there are exceptions to who can or cannot have a firearm on student, on school property, on the first page, 501-1, under definitions, school location, we say that's any time, school location can be defined as any place where a school activity is being held. Okay? And then, under B, it shall not be a violation if, number four, we have firearm safety or marksmanship courses. Now, I know when we were discussing this earlier, we talked about the students who are going for clay target practice. So when they're at that facility shooting pigeons, clay pigeons, that's a school location. Are we saying that they can or cannot have their cased, unloaded rifle in the car, or shotgun, in their car that they then use to go to? Because I know when, when it started, the school board was very clear about that not being allowed. But under this, I'm confused, is it allowed, or is it not allowed?
In that case, when you're talking about the students going to the external site where they participate in clay target, which is a school-sponsored activity, that is a piece that is acceptable. And I believe that if you look under, I'm trying to locate it where it is here, there is a section that talks about, just looking for it right now, there is another section that talks about where there is an exception. Let me just find it here.
Is it 4C, policy application of instructional equipment tools?
Yes. So basically, if you look at that particular piece, it talks about the fact that when there is particular permission, such equipment tools were properly possessed, used, and stored shall not be considered in violation. So it says, while the school district does not allow the possession, use, or distribution of weapons by students or non-students, such a position is not meant to interfere with instruction or use of the appropriate equipment and tools by students or non-students. Such equipment and tools were properly possessed, used, and stored should not be considered a violation of the rule against possession. In that particular case, that is identifying that when there is the appropriate, school-sponsored kind of piece, for example, like clay target, and remember, the clay target does not take place on our traditional buildings grounds, it takes at, takes place at a gun club off of campus. That particular piece clearly provides them the exception.
So they are allowed, I just, I need to be clear on this, for me. So they are allowed to have in their possession a firearm that is one. I'm looking at Section B on 501-2, Section B, number 3B, that as long as it is unloaded and in a gun case without any portion of it exposed, unloaded and in a closed trunk.
And you're talking about that being off-campus in terms of at the gun club, where they're actually doing that particular activity?
Okay. So they are not allowed to put it in their car in the morning, knowing that they're going to gun this student clay pigeon activity after school?
And I think that the important piece that Julie just mentioned is that those practices are not during the school week, they tend to be on a Sunday.
Okay, good.
They are exclusively on Sunday.
Okay, they're exclusively, okay, good, then that renders the point moot.
They are exclusively on Sunday. And then, I also wonder, under Roman numeral 3C, school location definition, the clay target area would not fall under a school, school location definition, because it's not leased, rent, owned, or controlled by the school.
That's a fair point, because, for example, the gymnastics club, if this happened at the gymnastics club, we actually leased the gymnastics club.
Okay.
Okay? So that is a place where we're actually leasing the time. The gun club, we don't actually have a lease, it's more of a shared use kind of agreement.
Well, it does say, "All locations where school-related functions are conducted, and anywhere students are under the jurisdiction of the school district." So when they're at shooting club, they're still under our jurisdiction, correct?
They are, but I also believe that that piece that Rob pointed out down below is the exception to that. And I think if we, if we go back to thinking about when the board first approved clay target, remember, this was a very key question that came up. And if you recall, the coaches and the advisors of that group saying, they're very clear that they, they teach that we do not bring these pieces to school, they are only transported to the gun club. And if you recall, there were several pieces about how intentional they were about teaching that, and so.
That's why I was confused here, so.
And that portion of the policy has not changed.
Right.
You know, that portion of the policy is exactly the same way that it has been for several years, and, and was really scrutinized when we looked at approving the clay target program.
So given that it's on Sunday, there should be no, no conceivable reason a member of that club should have that rifle in their car during Monday through Friday?
I would say that that's a first statement.
Okay, thank you. I just, I was a little confused when I was reading.
Well, and it does, I absolutely understand where you're coming from, because it's a little bit counterintuitive in the fact that that's the one activity, if you think about, that we sponsor, that does involve something that we actually have a policy in which it's probably the most, with the, potentially the most severe consequence for violating the policy, is violating the policy that governs firearms.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Good question, I'm happy we're getting that out now, because we need clarity.
So basically, they would be the ones that are, yes, we have permission for you to have that weapon at the gun club during that school-sponsored activity, is what we're saying?
That's exactly what the policy is saying, yes.
Okay. But the amendment that you're proposing for the school weapons policy is just specifically around the definition of a firearm?
That's correct. None of the, in, in the policy that you have, it's a underlying portion, so you'll see the pieces that are underlined and bolded are the items that are new. And again, just to be really clear as well, what we did is we asked our school district attorney to review the State versus Haywood case, asked them to review our policy and to ensure that they felt our policy aligned with the new case law.
Okay. So are there any other questions board members have? Just want to remind board members that this will be an item for individual action at our next board meeting. So while you've had time to look at it, you will have additional time between now and the next board meeting, and I would just encourage board members, if they have other questions or comments, that they get them to Dr. Hillman, and then he could share it with the rest of the board, so that we would be prepared to move on this at our next meeting. Ellen?
So I know that, Dr. Hillman, when I talked to you about this in our update, that the district youth council, I was, but I can't remember at what point that this was going to be shared with them, would be at the board.
So I believe that what will happen is that, talking with Mr. Lear, he has updated his staff, you know, that this was coming forward to the board, and that it will also be talked about with the district youth council, and will also be updating the, if, should the board approve this, we will make an unusual, but I think necessary, mid-year update to the Students Citizenship Handbook. So I think the key thing is that whether, whether the district youth council's meetings, I think there's one, is there, I think there's one, is there one this Wednesday? So what we'll do is we'll talk with Joel and make sure that he shares with them, you know, what the update is. And again, the issue, when we've done some of these in the past, policy with the DYC in the past, we've been looking for things like readability and things like that. In this particular case, I think that that's going to be more difficult, because of the fact that we are making sure that we write explicit policy language that aligns us with the case law. But I think the key thing is notification, because the DYC has said that they will make sure that they help us with articulating it. But I think it's notification.
Excellent. Great questions. I appreciate everyone taking the time to review this tonight, and for the good questions around, within the next two weeks, if you have further questions, we would, I just encourage everyone to get with Dr. Hillman to get those clarified before we have it as an item for individual action at our next board meeting. Okay, so we will move on to our next item for information, which is in the enrollment report, which was also in the table file, and attached to the table file in the back. Dr. Hillman?
So this is hot off the presses here, and as you'll see, our January So this is hot off the presses here and as you'll see, our January 3rd count at 4,074.5. And again, about 11 students more than we had after the December count. And if you remember, November, with that 4,077 number, we had qualified it because we had said that there was a small group of exchange students who were here on a short visit, but they were here long enough to where we have to count them as a student. And so we had told you, we just got to be careful about thinking that that number's going to go forward, but we're almost back up to that number. And I don't, to my knowledge, know that we have a group of 20 exchange students here for a short visit at this point. So again, the good news is we continue to see that enrollment increase, which also presents some of its own unique challenges.
Any questions regarding the enrollment report? Amy?
I just have a question about what you said. Why is it good for the enrollment numbers to go up?
Well, I think that what's, what I take as positive of enrollment figures going up, especially during the years, I think that it says that the school district has a positive reputation and that when people are choosing to, it's, if you think about it as a parent, moving your child, you know, during the middle of the year is not something that a lot of people would like to do. But what I think is positive is that when we see people choosing us as we do, I think that that speaks to the work that our staff is doing every day with kids. And I think it's really a reinforcement of the work that our staff is doing and that the school district has a positive reputation. It does create its own challenges as well. However, I think it's, it's better going up than down.
So most of those students are moving into the district in the middle of the school year?
Almost always when we are at the middle of the school year, there's two things that typically will happen. Number one is that they are either moving into the community. Another one would be that they are attending the district through a non-resident agreement. So they are actually living in a different district, but they are applying to come to school here through one of the statewide enrollment options.
Thank you.
Okay. I just had a comment. I'm looking back on the, at this report from Menominee Falls and we have probably about the same number of students, but they have almost 10,000 more people. Is that become, maybe they have more, being a larger city, do they have more private school options or charter schools? What is the difference there?
I do not know the answer about Menominee Falls in terms of what their demographic makeup outside of the school is, but that's something we could certainly look into.
I'm just curious.
It's a little bit closer, if you think about it, to the major metropolitan area being 20 miles from Milwaukee where we're slightly further. It would also tell, tell me that they have more people who do not have children in the school system, you know, than we do.
That's what I'm wondering.
And I think that those are all different pieces that are dependent upon the local housing economy, what kind of other amenities are there, the kind of workforce that they're employing. All of those variables are things that I, I think go into that.
I was just kind of looking at the comparison of the different elementary schools and it looks like Bridgewater, the other two are pretty stable, but Bridgewater's gone up 10 since September 6. And I'm just wondering if this data collected here gives us indications of where growth is happening in the district and how we, we might have to think about changes in the elementary schools at a certain point, if one's outpacing the growth of others. And I mean, there's space issues eventually.
Well, it's a, it's a very good point and we should always be looking at, you know, the grade configuration or the neighborhood configuration. That's something every school district should look at every so often. But I think one of the key things is that, and while I can't say that there's causation, but if you remember, one of the things that we've shared with you about the increase in enrollment this year is the significant increase of students who are open-enrolling or non-resident agreement from Faribault. And if you think about, if I'm a parent who's choosing to transport my child from Faribault to Northfield, Bridgewater is the, technically, the closest building. You don't have to go that much further to get to Sibley. But if I'm thinking about that kind of piece, I think to begin with, now, with non-resident agreements, we can say where a student will go to school. We don't have to give the parent their first choice, but we always do try to work with parents in terms of that. But we actually have even turned down a few non-resident agreements because of individuals who are looking at a, a grade level within a building that we felt was already at capacity. And so from time to time, we'll say to someone, they might say, "Well, I would really like to attend Sibley at this particular grade level." And we'll just be very honest with them, saying, you know what, that particular grade level is pretty, we probably wouldn't approve an, or a non-resident agreement for that particular building, but here are some other options. And Danita actually almost always fields those calls initially. And we use this enrollment report, we look at the buildings, and I think that's something we're going to have to continue to do with open enrollment and with, and more so with the non-resident agreement. Because we do have, as a school district, the state says we have the unilateral ability to accept or deny each and every one of those non-resident agreements solely based on our looking at that particular application. So there are times where we've either said, you know, if, if that was really the route you go, we would probably deny it because we have concerns about class size at that particular grade at that building, but we have another grade school over here. And many times, the people will choose to do their non-resident agreement in that different building and sometimes they choose not to. And that's a, that's a decision that we have to make and then people have to make their choice based upon what we have available.
Excellent. Great questions. Any other comments? No? Okay. Last item for information then is closed negotiations strategy session. Dr. Hillman?
So just a reminder that at the, after the conclusion of the January 23rd board meeting, we'll go into closed session to start talking about our negotiation strategies as we will be negotiating with the Northfield Education Association this year. And we want to get that process started, engaging you about the negotiations process.
Excellent. Any questions regarding the closed negotiations strategy session? Okay. So we'll go on to the reminder of future meetings. Monday, January 23rd, regular school board meeting in the High School Media Center. And as Dr. Hillman just mentioned, that will be followed by closed negotiations strategy session in the district office conference room. Then another regular school board meeting is Monday, February 13th, 2017, that also at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. So those are two future regular school board meetings and the closed negotiations strategy sessions. So with that, I ask for a motion that we adjourn. Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.